We submitted another grant application and were just awarded that just prior to Jim and I attending the conference for a million dollar revolving loan fund. So what we can do with this money now is now that we've identified and assessed various properties in the coalition counties, we now can utilize this money to work with the property owners to clean up their sites if needed. Say there's some type of patrolling contamination or blood-based paint and asbestos or whatever the particular contamination may be, we can now work with those property owners to get these sites cleaned up utilizing this revolving loan fund which provides low-interest loans to property owners to get their sites cleaned up so that they can get them out there for sale or lease or put them back on.
Let me ask you a question because you just mentioned something that's of interest to me. It may not happen, but what if we were, what if this building would, would this building qualify, Jim, let me ask you. This building qualify for demolition with brownfield?
It would not. We tried to get it to qualify to do the phase one, phase two here about six months ago. That would have been the initial step first to get the phase one done. And they came back with the decision that because the county had been in this building since day one, we were responsible for the contamination. With the original intent of the grant we had for the assessments, the current owner of the property could not be the responsible party who did the contamination. So that took us out of that scenario issue. I can look and see if on the revolving loan fund, if a phase one can be done by an outside party and not by the original program to be able to qualify for us to go forward and apply for revolving loan funds. We can't.
Well, that's why I was asking because this just came into play and the other was done prior.
Yeah, we just got the approval a week ago on the revolving loan fund. We're still going through some of the, Knight County is the responsible party, they applied for it. But White Pine has, or a landowner with contaminated brownfields has the right to apply to Knight County for funds from that revolving loan fund. Now, it's a loan and I don't know if the interest rates have been determined yet.
Well, I just, if we qualify, to check it out. I'm always interested in checking how we can get more money.
I'll get some more information for us on that.
That'd be good.
And I think Jim actually, when we were at the conference, he came across more of the summer, is that what he said, some interesting information on how we can possibly, I don't know.
Well, the funds, when the funds are received by Knight County, there's a lot of restrictions from EPA on what you can use those funds for. However, there was an attorney in New York who, what they did is they went ahead and took those funds and then applied them, lent them to that city that he was from to clean the brownsoaps project, which they actually had funding already for. And so they wind up paying off then that loan two weeks later with the money they had set aside already. And now that freed up that brownfields money to be used for other issues, still brownfields, but less restrictions. So if there was a restriction that came into play for us that wouldn't allow us to apply, that would be lifted once the money was lent out and repaid. And so Knight County may be looking at the same type of opportunity, quickly borrowing it, paying it back, now removing some of the EPA issues.
So with that, you know, if you have any additional questions at this time, again, I just wanted to give a brief, organized update of where we're at. We still have funding available, you know, with the first million dollar grant for additional identification and assessment of properties, you know, as I said, we've done two here in White Pine County so far, but we'd certainly like to do more if possible. And we were really excited about, you know, getting nicely property assessed. But like I said, we're continuing to engage here and we can bring her back into the fold soon. But, you know, you guys know your community and if you have any, any properties that you're aware of that you think might qualify as a brownfield, please let me know or Jim.
I'm, I'm really excited about McGill Ballpark to get that.
Yeah.
Because that's a usable operation and we haven't been able to use it properly.
Right, right. And that was a, that was a great win for the community and to utilize this, this funding to get the site.
So what does the second phase include there?
Well, the, the revol, you're talking about revolving loans?
No, I'm talking about phase two, you said, of the ballpark.
Well, that's already been completed. So we did an initial iron ore assessment, yeah. And so that's for, for the McGill Library, we're going to be doing the phase two because we think we have probably blood-based paint and asbestos issues.
Any questions, Abra? If none, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Green, appreciate your time.
Items from elected officials department, I'm table in number three because I needed the information. I needed to continue on with this. So item one, discussion action, possible approvals to reverse Wreck Brothers LLC nineteen hundred dollars based on the research that they did over and above what it would have cost to tie in to the sewer, in to the sewer line at the White Pine County Industrial Park. Mr. Hopp.
Yes, the industrial park review board went over this because there's questions on our, our liability or what was allowed for Wreck Brothers to tie into the water. They went about their job diligently to tie into this, they never found a lead. So I'm going to ask Jim Garza because he's, he's up into it and he'll explain exactly what it is.
What took place out there in Jim Garza, Director of Community Economic Development, Wreck Brothers had did extensive digging along the property line looking for the sewer water extension that supposedly may have been available for them to tie into. They did find the water extension but weren't able to find the sewer extension. And looking at the original documents for construction out there of the improvements, we weren't able to find in the drawings for the street improvements of the water sewer lines that proved out that extension may or may not have been put in. It was conflicting information. So after they dug up probably fifty feet of trench work, which, you know, there was a lot of cables in the line, they went ahead and made the decision and worked with Bill Miller at the road department to put in their own sewer line and tap into the sewer feed. So they had incurred an expense of about thirty-six hundred dollars. We feel half of that funding that they had put into the project was needed by them. The additional nineteen hundred and a half, we feel that we should be responsible through the, through the industrial review board, up and beyond what would have been required of them. So we're just asking for approval of nineteen hundred out of the industrial review board's funds, which we have the funds to, to reverse Wreck Brothers for half of that cost.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have. Backing up a lot of years, how does Wreck Brothers even justify being in the industrial park?
Well, they are the fifth owner of that parcel. Originally was purchased by Kathy Dowell when, back when the industrial park was active. And their intent was to use the industrial park, originally was to put their office and to have an asphalt facility, from what I understand. The asphalt facility had a lot of issues with the neighborhoods and they decided it would be best not to put that there. So they're still utilizing it as office facility for their specific business. And they're looking at developing one or two more office buildings out there to lease, something similar to a flex space where they would have outside storage and office space for any of the companies that may come in, the mining industries, subcontractors, things of that nature.
My question is, did they have, don't they have a map of the sewer and the water lines out there so they know what sewer goes into it?
We, we do have sewer and water lines that are installed on Alpha and Beta Street, but the drawings that were put together originally when the improvements were done back in the late eighties aren't very clear on the extension of the sewer and water lines. So the construction drawing documents that went out to did were a little confusing as well. So there's not a clear record if the water sewer lines were actually pulled in from the main lines to each lot as a tap-in. It was surprising when they found a water tap-in, that would go against the fact that those extension lines were not put in. But surprisingly, they didn't find a sewer line where, where they thought it would be based on their conversations with, with basin engineering. So it's, it's.
Now, the, the initial purpose, if my memory is here to be correct, the initial purpose for that industrial park was to enhance new industry in the White Pine County. That is self-convoluted out there, it's pathetic. And all the money the county has spent to develop the industrial park has only developed it for private people and that, and you look at every parcel that's out there and everything that we sold, there's only one or two that even qualify to be there at all. So to go out there and buy a parcel of land and get a parcel of land at the price that the county sells it for is a hell of a deal. And I, I, I just don't, first off, and I'd like to say, being that Wreck Brothers is the agenda item, I highly respect Wreck Brothers and I'm not discussing this issue in lieu of their, their themselves because they're, they're a good group of people and they're a good operation. But the whole thing out there is so, so screwed up, it's pathetic. And, and buying a piece of property out there is a real deal and I think all the covenants and restrictions out there have been violated. If you want me to refresh your memory, when the VLM first went out there, that was a big one. And that property was given to a company, a developer, Trion Corporation, and they developed that property. They had exclusive right to that property. There was about ten other individuals and people that wanted to develop the property and did. So, so this, from the onset of the whole thing in sewer water, and, and I'll inform you more, I, I'm not going to vote on this issue because I do own property continues to the industrial park and I own property in the industrial park and I often wonder how the hell I even got it. But I'm only going to say that it is very screwed up. I think that the guy I argue with, the pine dog, he's probably the only guy that really justifies being there.
We, we have been holding regular meetings now with the industrial review board and it is our intent to look at the covenants. There was a fourth addition that was never approved by the commission. We're going forward with that and then we're going to.
You're, you're going off the agenda.
No, 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 I think, I think that may be the district attorney. Do we need to take a break?
No, no. We just need to discuss whether or not we're going to send the nineteen hundred dollars to.
Yeah, we have, we're out of item.
I got a question for Jim. Jim, am I oversimplifying by saying they incurred thirty-eight hundred dollars to find and detect whether or not there was their number and reached a conclusion on that and had gone ahead and built their own? The fifth owner of a property with repeated leases say that you're taking it as is was no obligation, but on the other hand, there was a county document showing sewer that turned out not to be accurate. And the district council, sorry, district attorney's recommendation consistent with that of the IRB, is that we split the cost, is that where the nineteen hundred comes from?
That's correct.
Is there, am I missing another really important fact in that summary?
And so the problem is the lines were in, were laid in, but we didn't know where to put the extension.
That's correct. I'm really confused. Bill, do you, you guys have something to say back there because this is really confusing.
I kind of agree with Mike Coster's.
Pardon?
I, I believe Mike Coster's summary is correct is how I understand it being on that board.
Karen, do you have anything?
No, Terry called me at home and of course it's kind of hard to resurrect without the files in front of you and the maps, but that's part of the city system and I don't know, the city would probably have additional maps if those weren't checked.
That's, that's what I was thinking, municipal water district would have the additional mapping out there. I think this time I would ask the table to decide until we do more research on this because the way it is now just doesn't sound right to, it doesn't sound right to me, so I'm speaking for myself.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Could we see, in conjunction with that, did we see the minutes of the IRB that discussed if maybe we could have standard?
Absolutely. That's why we need more information here to really discuss this properly. Okay? I'll, I'll entertain a motion for table.
I'll make a motion again, this item, that they definitely.
Until we get all our information, then we'll go back.
Additional information?
Go here, second?
A second, Ken.
Okay, question? All in favor? Aye opposed?
Aye abstaining.
Okay, we have four ayes and one abstentions.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. I'm going to take about five minutes. If you'll step up to the microphone, sir, we'll take it.
Well, to give you the record, we have Buck, I'm Charba, White Pine County Water Advisory Board. And here to talk about renting the convention center for one evening for our meeting on June eleventh, that will have Senator Gobishian in assembly and we're going to have an army over there to see what we can do about coming slate. If anything, they tell me it's in real trouble from the fishing game. They've had a doctor study, a third study done on it and they don't know that there's much we can do but willing to talk about too, we can do, but we got to get the water taken care of, mitigate the problem coming down Stupco Creek that's still running through the tailings.
Bill, I thought, I thought, Mike, you might correct me, we had a presentation made at Rotary a year or so ago that they were supposed to drain that this in two thousand and fourteen and.
That, that's, the fishing game's coming, they're coming with the head guy from Elko that told me.
Oh, that's why he's coming now?
Yeah, that's what they're coming for, they're going to give us the plan of what's going to happen. And they're bringing their new, as I understand, the leader of the fishing game is coming. And apparently they're going to give us a timeline, there'll be a letter coming out on about what we think they need to be talking about raising the dam, about, they got an algae, I guess, that eats burglary, what the timeline is on it. So, I mean, we're going to get all of this stuff hopefully then.
Okay.
So, and we're going to have it over to convention center. And the young lady says, I have to come and get on my knees and beg for a dollar to pay for the rent, so we'll do that. And we had another interesting thing, a lady called the doctor, Alex Lutz, she's at Desert Research Institute, and they want to do a study, or they're getting their money together now, and they're going to come in and they want to go and do the study of vegetation and everything, starting at Cleveland Basin and see what it's got to do with, I guess, climate change, with fires going through areas and all, a whole study of that and then they're going to, the Desert Research Institute's going to do it. And really, we don't know too much about it, but she hopefully should be to our August meeting and she'll pop, tell us about it and I'll send her to see you gentlemen.
Sure, sure.
I'm one of the boys, Bill, that's.
But anyway, this is, this just came up and they want to do it and this is independently funded, it don't have nothing to do with this and nobody or anything else, this is going to be free, it'll be peer reviewed, so.
So you want a hundred bucks for it?
We need a hundred bucks.
Well, the policy of the tourism record is not to give a freebie, so I'm going to offer twenty-five if the others will offer twenty-five, how's that?
Well, it's a hundred, she is.
Well, then.
I'm going to get a hundred and twenty-five. I'll take it. The natural resources fund don't pay for it.
Oh, well, I didn't finish reading, Bill, I'm sorry, I just.
Hundred dollars.
Right, right.
No, we'll pay our way.
That's fine, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, and that's on the, June eleventh, okay. And you don't have a date.
A date.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, what time?
I give Lori, this is a letter, it's going out to everybody.
All right.
Right there and you'll get it in your mail list.
We'll be there, Bill.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, okay, there's six o'clock is what the date, the time is.
Now, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the hundred dollars for the Versaco Convention Center out of the National Resource Fund for the June eleventh White Pine County Water Advisory Committee Town Hall meeting.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, second question. All in favor? Aye opposed? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to our agenda as it was. Our next item is discussion actual, action to approve a resolution two thousand thirteen oh four, a modification of resolution two thousand twelve two nine pertaining to the meeting date of the White Pine County Industrial Park, Mr. Hopp.
Yeah, this is just, a lot of the members have conflicting things to do each day and we, we're requesting that we be able to change our meeting day. I think Jim, again, I'll defer to him and his money, exactly what it is.
Sure, thank you.
Mission Jim Garza, Director of White Pine County Community Economic Development. What we're looking at doing is just changing the one paragraph per which of removing a specific date and time through the month to hold the meetings since we have collaboration board members that are busy. And all we're looking at doing is changing paragraph five to read the meetings of the White Pine County Industrial Park Review Board shall be held during the third business week of each month and the board members shall select the specific date and time at the prior meeting before the next meeting. That gives a little flexibility.
Okay. Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the modification of resolution two zero one two dash two nine pertaining to the meeting date of the White Pine County Industrial Park.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second one.
Have a second? Question? All in favor? Aye opposed? Number four, discussion.
I'm sorry, can we just read the title of the resolution on the record?
Oh. The legislation is two zero one three dash oh four and the modification is two zero one two dash two nine. Is that what you mean?
After the park review board and just a summary that this is, I think that was the resolution.
He's going to read the resolution.
Do you want me to read the whole thing?
The whole thing.
Okay, whereas the White Pine County Commission strives to achieve the goals of strengthening and stabilizing the area economy, generate jobs and revenue, to improve the quality of life in White Pine County and citizens. Whereas White Pine County Commission seeks the assistance of area, is this it?
Just say that's it.
Okay. The area citizens with the interest and expertise in the area of industrial and commercial development, property development and property maintenance to provide oversight, planning and recommendations for the operations of the White Pine Industrial Park. Now therefore be it resolved that the White Pine County Commission creates the White Pine County Industrial Park Review Board to fulfill the needs of the commission and the county citizens for assistance in planning, developing and operation of the White Pine Industrial Park. Be it therefore resolved that the purpose of the White Pine Industrial Park Review Board is to assist the board of White Pine County Commissioners regarding the development of the White Pine County Industrial Park and the application and enforcement of protective covenants applicable thereto. The duties and responsibilities of the White Pine County Industrial Park Review Board are A, to serve as an advisory board to assist the board of county commissioners regarding the development of the White Pine County Industrial Park and the application and enforcement of the protective covenants applicable thereto. B, to review any construction proposed for the industrial park for the compliance and covenants restrictions and conditions of the protective covenants applicable to the industrial park. And C, to recommend adoption of rules and regulations outlining the criteria and development guidelines for all proposed uses and construction of the industrial park. Item three, the membership of the White Pine Industrial Park Review Board shall consist of five members and shall include one member of the board of commissioners and one member of the White Pine County Mining Commission. Four, the term of the members appointed to the White Pine County Industrial Review Board shall be two years and shall expire on December thirty-first of the respective years. Five, meetings of the White Pine County Industrial Review Board shall be held during the third business week of each month and the board members will select the specific day and time at the prior meeting before the next meeting. And six, the White Pine County Industrial Review Board shall operate according to the provisions of the White Pine County Advisory Board Standards of Operation.
Yeah, perfect. Okay. All right, we have a motion, second, we voted on it, correct? Bring me up your table, okay, thank you. Discussion action, possible approval, request from Baker Area Citizens Advisory Board for grant application assistance, construct a pedestrian bicycle path adjacent to SR four eighty-seven to the town of Baker, Nevada to allow safe route for school to Baker Elementary School, Mr. Coster.
Thank you. This is a request from Baker and Lynn Hoffman is here today to present this along with me. There is a state Department of Transportation, a lot of money and available grants for, among other things, group improvement to public schools. And they have found an opportunity to apply for such a grant. And in this preliminary request are asking for county citizens to prepare the grant application. I'm happy to report and I'm sure Lynn is related to report that the pre-application process, which was, which was previously submitted after discussion with Jim Garza's folks and was approved, they liked the concept, so now this will be the opportunity to put an application together. Of course, the county, Baker's not asking at this time to accept the grant, but rather to have some county public works assistance in formulating how much, what would actually be involved, how many cubic yards of this and how many square feet of that, how many feet of wire, that sort of thing, going into the project using the state forms.
When we, when we do that, then we need to discuss with the finance department and then they'll, they'll make the application up. They need, they need the monies that it'll consist of, right, Bill?
Yeah, at this point we don't know.
Jim, I have some to shake hands after, I know you have to do that. And then we go to the finance department at further final approval and make sure if there's any matching funds, is that correct? And then we're, we're happy to, to assist, so.
Yeah, at this point we don't even know the matching percentage unfortunately because dot and N dot can change that based on how they categorize the grant unfortunately. So this is, I guess my general nature, this is three of all numbers. Obviously we knew a little bit more, but we don't.
Well, at this time, we can approve the concept.
Yes, right, and that's right.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the concept of the item four.
And this is include support from the engineer?
It's what?
Will this include support from the engineer answering the application?
Yeah, after you get all that information together, then we go in and we discuss with the, yes?
I was going to say, who's there? So Baker's looking for us to pay for the engineer then? When you need my support or?
Yes.
No, yeah, I, let me just, no, I think what you're asking for is non, non external support from a professional engineer, but rather the public works department to assist you in seeing the maps, placing it out, measuring what square footage is going to be involved and to do a non-professional engineering workup to complete the application to the state.
Right, I don't have the resources to myself to answer these questions. Some of them I can answer, will the project help improve air quality? No, I know that.
No, well, we'll, we could, Mr. Garza's office could assist you with that. So don't worry, but what we need to do now is approve the concept, then they'll tell you the steps you have to take, so don't you fret.
All right.
Okay?
Very nice, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll entertain a motion to, again, to approve the concept of the bicycle route in Baker and applying for the grant.
The, the grant assistance. I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the request from the Baker Area Citizens Advisory Board for grant application assistance.
Good. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second over on this side. Okay. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Richard, second. Okay, item five, thank you very much. Discussion action, possible approval of request from Baker Area Citizens Advisory Board for grant application assistance.
Just did that.
No, we didn't.
I apologize, I'm my fault, I, I got old there.
And I was a lot younger then. It's tall streetlights in the town of Baker from the U.S. Post Office at the intersection of SR four eighty-seven and SR four eighty-eight, two zero point two five miles south along SR four eighty-seven, Mr. Coster.
Yes, sir, this is a parallel request also from the Baker's Area Citizens Advisory Board for assistance in applying to N dot for the placement of whatever. for assistance in applying to NDOT for the placement of what are estimated to be four or five streetlights over the roughly two blocks that constitute the center commercial area of Baker. There are issues on safety and kids biking at night. There's a whole number of options with the state on the types of lights and the types of light standards. It's not possible at this point to estimate the cost, but again, they would like to have access to Jim's office as well as.